Call this meeting to order for the road committee. I want to thank all the commissioners for being here today, Tom and Shannon and Josh. We've got Grant with a banner, Mayor Davis, thanks for being here. If I could get approval of the February twenty second, twenty twenty four minutes.
Second.
All those approved, they have? Things approved. We'll get right into it with the agenda items and we'll start with the letter A with Brad Drive.
Hey, good morning, y'all. So Brad Drive, if y'all remember out there, the, the road was outside of the right of way. And we were thinking we were going to move the road over back in the right of way. But we got out there and it's going to be a lot of money to move that road. It may be a lot of rock out there and it might cause some drainage problems out there. So to avoid that, we're thinking we're just going to pave it out there and that'll make all the neighbors out there happy. Only thing we're waiting on right now, there's Mr. Delka, Mr. Freeman. They are going to write us, I guess they're going to deed just a little bit of their land to the county. We're just waiting on them to talk to the bank to get that done. But that, everyone's going to be happy out there and we got a solution for out there. Anybody want to say anything about Brad Drive?
I think we'll be glad that one's.
Yeah, for real. So moving on to Hewitt Street. If y'all remember Hewitt Street, there's a few houses out there, it's by the Trowsdale School. Few houses out there where there's a county right of way leading to the lots, but there's no road out there. So I talked to Crystal and she has sent out letters to everybody, giving them permission to build a driveway on that county right of way. But the county's not going to go in there and build a road just because there's a right of way on the map there. But that situation's resolved too. Anybody wants to say anything on that? All right. Moved on to Sheffy Lane. Unfortunately, that project had to be canceled. We got back from the railroad. They were saying if we wanted to take the hump out of the road, then we were going to have to replace the railroad gates. Because they've got like a federal standard, the gate's got to be so high above the road. So that was going to be four hundred thousand dollars for the gates out there, just for the gates. And then there's a bunch of design fees that come with that. It could have been a million dollar project by the end of it. Didn't have anywhere near the budget to pay for those gates and to get done what we wanted to get done out there. But we have done some sloping work on our right of way. We've done some drainage work and we've removed some stumps out there to do what we could as the county. Just to make the road a little bit safer out there. Well, their, their reason was it's got the gates out there. And actually tried to get them to pay for the gates. We looked for some federal money, T-Dots and control all that federal money. And they said they, there's other crossings that need gates a lot more. There's a lot more dangerous crossing than that Sheffy Lane. And they looked over the case and they felt that it was driver's, driver error more than anything. And they just couldn't justify giving a bunch of money to the county for that. But in the process of asking for that money for Sheffy Lane, they found another railroad crossing that was really dangerous. Old Chattanooga Pike, we got that a little bit further down. I guess we could go and talk about that.
Well.
Old Chattanooga Pike, it's off of Lee Highway. And there's a, the train comes around curve and there's a bunch of trees out there. So a school bus could pull up to that crossing, stop, look both ways and it's clear, no trains coming. School bus starts to go across, trains are going sixty miles an hour out there. It could fly around the corner, hit the school bus, there's no lights out there, there's no gates out there. They just got a yield sign out there. So T-Dot, the people over the railroad have agreed to put in gates for free and do that whole project that they're going to cover for the county. That probably, you include all the engineering fees and everything, it's probably a million dollars that the county gets out of that. And they think that that's a lot better use of the money than Sheffy Lane, their feeling. So we got something out of it at least.
So back to the Sheffy Lane. All right, so I guess it's your call on, on closing the project or ending the project. But as far as the appropriation goes, I understand you use some of it, but not all of it. So if the commission, because that, that, that wasn't put into one thirty-one. That was money that, that the state gave us about a million dollars a year. And the previous administration chose to do this project, we appropriate it. So that's not one thirty-one money, that's money from a different fund.
Right, right, so the county was going to.
It should come back to that fund.
Right, so there's money left over from that. As the project's not being completed, there's money left over in that and I guess.
It comes back into.
Yeah, we'd come back to.
I think I saw one of the POs, you spent like sixty something thousand on engineering?
Yeah.
And there was a couple hundred thousand that was appropriated. So the difference between what was appropriated and what you've already spent should come back into that fund, is that correct?
That's right.
So we'll be, we'll be canceling the POs, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
But apparently that may have changed now, as, as they say, they would give us an estimate as to what it would cost. So what turned out originally probably was going to cost the county a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're probably up over a million now. You know, time you factor in all the construction costs, engineering costs, cost to raise those gates. You're up over a million dollars and we don't have it, I mean.
We, I understand, it's, you know, I think when that happened, you know, sometimes emotions run, you know, I think two young kids from Walker Valley had an accident there and we wanted to show something. I mean, if, but you've made some improvements that.
We've done the improvements that we can.
Our gear towards safety out there.
Yes, sir.
And hopefully it never happens again, I mean. But I understand, yeah, I do remember that, Wright Brothers, we're just going to be a part of this project.
The tree that the kids hit's gone now, so that's a good thing. Tree's been gone, but they got rid of the stump, so what the kids actually hit is gone, the dip's still there.
We've moved, we've moved the ditch back away from the roadway a little bit.
Widened a little bit.
Just actually last week, so. Helps a little, but I, I really wish we would have just went in there and done the project and not even let the railroad know we were doing anything. I mean, that's, they're, they're the hardest entity to work with you will ever work with. Unless they want something, unless it's to help them.
All right, so I've got Pleasant Grove Place Bridge next. That is, it comes out of the T-Dot High Priority Bridge Program. And that project was started, they got an engineering firm that designed the bridge and the money ran out, so T-Dot's out of money with that bridge fund. But the money gets re-upped in July of twenty twenty-six and they said that it might go to letting, so people start bidding on it. July twenty twenty-six could be the earliest that could start. The ARPA striping update for you guys. I got a, a list of the roads we've striped this year. I can give that to Lori if she can send it out to you guys. We've got about twenty-five roads striped this year and we got another fifteen, they're going to get striped next week. Y'all notice our stripper we had last year, he didn't do the best work. But we got a new striper now, so we got a lot, better paint going down, it's going to last a lot longer. So the striping's going good.
We go back to E Hancock Road?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Yeah, Hancock Road, that was, there's a lady with a house in front of that subdivision that's out there. It's a real steep hill, the water, a lot of water from the subdivision that comes flying down the hill. And it had been washing out her driveway. And we've already put some new gravel on her driveway, on the apron where the right of way is, where it was washing out. And we reditched in front of that subdivision to try to turn the water to stay in the ditch. But it's moving so fast, it really doesn't want to go in the ditch. So we're going to pave her a little apron where the right of way is. So that'll hopefully last a lot longer than the gravel that's been washing out.
Been out there several times, next to me. Lady don't, not her house, it's her rental house. This is a good example. Subdivision on a hill, playing for subdivision. County road running down, down hill. Water from run down hill, I don't. That's real steep and I don't believe it's going to happen. About it. What you do is going to run them. Creek down there, creek. That's the other side. So I don't, I don't know what would do to break it. There's drainage laws, which there are none, there's no law about drainage. If you dump, if you dig a ditch and you take your water off your property and you head it right toward my house, they can't come and arrest you for that, there's no law on it other than, than case law. And case law adheres to the, the fact that the upper property on the hill has a right to discharge water to the property owner below. Provided that you don't increase it, funnel it, or change the direction of it to where it's an adverse, adverse effect to the lower property owner. So, and when, we all have a responsibility to keep water moving where it's supposed to go. Sometimes we get asked to take care of everybody's drainage problem. For example, if you, if you have a, a little creek on your property and the beavers decide to build on it. Well, if you back that water up onto your, the property owner on the opposite side of the road, they can take you to court and the judge is going to tell you, when you bought that property, you brought, you bought the, the drainage problem with it, whether it be beavers, whatever. You bought, you bought that problem. So we get asked all the time to go on the people's property and break beaver dams, clean out ditches, everything. But that's really not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to keep it moving under that road. Like I say, I, I don't, I don't know how you handle all these situations, but we try to avoid. Now, if it were, if they were a problem with their drainage backing water up on our road, we might take them to court and get the property owner to do something. But it's all, it's all a civil matter, drainage is. And in this case, if you pull up all the topo maps, you'll see that the drainage comes off the top of that hill toward that house. Now, we can try to contain it, but we can't stop it. And, and I wish that people who are buying houses would come to the road department and let us look at it and, and advise them that you're buying a drainage problem. When you buy a house on the lower part of the hill and that road is right in front of you, you're buying a problem.
Does it matter that she was there first? Her house was there way before that subdivision was built, way before.
Well, was she there before the hill was there?
No, of course not, but.
Okay, so then that's, that's where the law comes in. Now, I'll give you an example, when I worked for T-Dot, there was a guy, he lived on the lower part. They were doing a subdivision upon the, the ridge behind him. And he kept calling me, he said, Mr. Collins said that they're turning water loose on me. Well, by it being construction, it was muddy water, okay? And I told him, I said, you need to get these people in court, the same as what happened out on the Candice Creek Ridge Road. While this water is dirty and while there's bigger rock coming down with it, you need to get these people in court. Well, he drug it on, drug it on, trying to get people to help him. And everybody that he talked to told him to get it in court. Well, it rocked on until this water cleared up. And he's still getting a lot of water, but it's clear, it doesn't look as bad, there's no more big rock coming down. Then he decides to take them to court, so he does. And the judge awarded him one dollar. And I, of course, I didn't know what the dollar was for and they said that's because he can't never bring it back up again. So, you know, if he listened to me, he may have got a judgment against him, but you know, he didn't. And the same thing happened here in Bradley County and if you've been on the commission very long, you know about it. Candice Creek Ridge Road, it went on for several years.
You've got some corrective action you're going to.
We're doing what we can.
Yeah.
Inside the right of way.
Appreciate that, though.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Thompson?
Um, I know, like you said, they knew that, of course, they know if they're bottom of hill, water's going to come down on them. But before that subdivision was built, that was a hill and it was wooded hill. And it took care of a lot of water, the groundwater.
Right.
Took care of a lot of it, didn't have that problem then.
Right.
But when they built the subdivision and run the road down the hill and that, of course, that put a lot of water right into that one area. And that, that's the problem there, I guess, but that's the reason I say it goes back to the developer. And when they build on a hill like that, and we've seen some problems like that now. And when they do, well, they've got problems, they haven't got the right drainage on it. When they build, well, they're going to have problems, somebody is at the bottom of that hill. And so I just think that we need to look at, these developers need to look and the planners or whatever need to look at how these settings are and try to eliminate some of that.
You're absolutely right. I think through the years, you know, the developers present a drainage plan with their plat. And I'm not sure that, that we have been looking in depth at it, at the drainage plans. Already, since Josh has been here, he's found one subdivision where we had to go back and, and change some drainage. He didn't feel like that it was going to work, it was going to cause a problem for somebody downhill. So he's, he's worked with them to get it changed. And I think we're going to have to do more of that to correct the problem from here on out. There's not a lot we can do. What's happened in the past, deal with it the best we can. But I think in the future, that we're going to look a little closer at their drainage plan before we ever start approving anything.
Got a few roadless updates, I can send out a copy to you guys. Just the city's annexed a couple roads, or a little bit of a couple roads. And over in Bellingham Drive, they added on, got a little bit more road on Bellingham Drive. Just a couple of little things like that, we can send it out to you guys. And we're going to update it with the courthouse, so they'll have the, the updated road list for twenty twenty-four. Spring Branch Road.
Before, before we leave the annexation of the city, I'd like to bring up this. We need somebody and I don't know if it should be me or, or who really, mayor to mayor or something. But when, when the city annexes a parcel or whatever, a, and in most cases, they annex the county roadway. And, but when they do, we can't get them to move the city limit sign. And that, that causes a problem for us because our guys out here mowing, they depend on those city limit signs. I don't know how many times we've mowed their property for them. But anyway, we need to get them to work with us a little bit about designating where their city limits is. For example, Free Wheel Road, you know, they annexed out toward Prospect School. And they won't move the sign, the city limit sign, it's still a mile away. Well, Shannon lives on the section that got annexed. And she don't know where, call that man over the road department or the city, she don't know who's in charge of it. And I've got the annexation report and it does say that the city will maintain that, that road. But still, the city limit sign's not moved.
Chairman Cry.
You mentioned Bellingham Drive, what, that's county, I live there. What, what was the connection to the city?
Well, the city didn't actually take any of Bellingham Drive. The road length just changed on the road list because the developer added in a stretcher road. It's like a big loop out there, he connected the loops, I think he added a thousand foot of road. It wasn't annexation with Bellingham Drive, but.
There's two hundred and twenty units, that's going on, bring it up here in a minute, but townhomes, it's already built there.
Yeah.
But it's not in the city.
Right, right.
Mr. Chairman, Peach Orchard Hill Road is a good example. They went down, commissioned down Peach Orchard Hill Road, on the right side is the city. And, uh, as far as I know, they didn't take the road in. And that's, that's wrong. If a city annexes, they at least need to take half of the road in anyway. But that's a problem, it's always been a problem and I, I've brought it up to their attention many times. And, and of course, they got some kind of smart answer, you know, but anyway, it's just, it's just not right if they take in a piece of property, they need to annex that road with it. And don't leave the road to the county.
Frontage, frontage road's a good example of that too.
All right.
He's over the public works, but. I don't know, I don't know who's. Well, they, they actually on, on Murraytown Road, going back to the Free Wheel Road annexation. On Murraytown Road, they did put up signs for that little section that they took in as, as city. But they have it on Free Wheel, which leads me to believe they may not be acknowledging that it's theirs. I think maybe they do recognize that it's theirs because they striped it. In fact, they even striped the county's portion of it, so.
Anyone else on this subject?
All right, moving on to Spring Branch Road. This is one we talked about before. There was a industrial park that was put out there and that took part of Spring Branch Road and it made it dead end in front of this guy, Mr. Rue's house. And Mr. Rue was having everybody turn around in his yard. So he talked to us, see if we could do something about it. We ended up doing a land swap with him where he. We ended up doing a land swap with him, where he gave us a little bit of his land in a field, um, for his house. And we gave him a little bit of county right of way, um, that's in front of his house. And we built a turnaround out there, so people can turn around at that end, uh, instead of in, in his yard. So, we had it surveyed out there. Everything's been done out there. But according to Crystal, we have to do a vote to the county commission to abandon part of that right of way. And, uh, I'll send out email with the copy of the survey and everything, what's gonna be traded out there. But, um, that's just the final step, getting the whole thing resolved. And actually, Mylan helped us out, um, talked to the industrial development board, and he got them to pay for the survey and pay for the rock out there. So, thank you, Mylan.
We need to vote on it here.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we abandon the right of way of Spring Branch Road.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Right.
And adding the, the property that we're taking in.
Swapping right of way for right of way here.
A second from Mr. Thompson. Any other discussion on it? Will vote, all those in favors say aye? Oppose? Eyes have it?
All right, and Crystal said it needs to go to the county commission. Other, needs another vote on it, too. All right, there's, um, Carolina Lane, there's a subdivision out there. And it's off of Old Charleston Road. That road was never took in. Uh, the previous administration, we were able to find where they did inspections out there. And the road beats all the county requirements for being a county road. So we wanna go ahead and take that in, and I will send out an email with the road intake documents. But just thought I'd mention that.
So we need to vote on that also.
Day or motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we take in Caroli- Carolina Lane as one of the county roads.
Second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those oppose? Eyes have it?
All right.
And another thing, our county salt shed is falling apart. That salt is really hard on the concrete. Um, I think, Mylan, you had mentioned there's actually a plan for some. Eventually, maybe not, maybe not. Forget I said anything. Uh, but we need a new salt shed eventually, and within, I mean, hope it doesn't fall over anytime soon, but it's kinda leaning a little bit, concrete getting eaten away, so we'll need a new salt shed. Talked to T-Dot, they got a real good design on theirs, if they use some special sealer or something that saves the concrete, but we're gonna talk to them, get one that'll last a long time.
How much do salt sheds cost?
I, I've tried to talk to T-Dot a couple times to get a price from him. Haven't been able to yet, but I wouldn't wanna tell you wrong.
All right, that'll be the first step. Uh, I anticipated probably being in your budget request come next March.
Okay.
All right.
Getting salt time, whoever make the mo- we might have to do something about it now. Don't wait to winter time, make that move.
He doesn't even know how much it costs, Commissioner.
Find him some money.
But they are getting salt. I mean...
Well, they gotta have a place to put it, what if it falls down on it?
You're getting money for it.
Damn, we, we got a salt shed full of salt, damn.
Well, you, you've got, you'll have money in there for what's called salt, but you could use it toward that if you wanted to. It'd still be for the salt issue. You've got, they've got twenty thousand dollars there for that purpose.
That's to buy salt, though, isn't it? What are you gonna do?
Well, they, they, he's basically saying we don't need salt, we need the salt shed worse, so you could use it toward the salt shed.
Yeah, and let them do that salt. And that's a bad way to think.
We'll, we'll get an estimate.
There's a, a last few on here, uh, Bellingham Drive and Bell Chase Way. Um, Mr. Cry, uh, is that you bringing that up?
Yes, the dilemma that we have is, there's a total of right now, two hundred and twenty townhomes, no single family residents, all townhomes. And we have another twenty vacant lots that he's, soon as he can get them built on, they'll be built. And my concern is traffic. I, I don't have any young kids, but I, there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood and a lot of cars. You have an average of about a car and a half per townhome. And, uh, that has become really an, Urbane Road, a mass of humanity. What I'm looking for is, if we could, is to get a speed limit sign erected at the three entrances to those townhomes. Uh, to alert the people. We've got a couple of people in there that's got motorcycles that enjoy using. Uh, the kids can run out between the cars, you can't stop, but really, twenty-five miles an hour, you can't stop. Prevent hitting a kid. Uh, I'd like to see if we could get approved a speed limit sign of fifteen miles an hour, and you got that little yell sign that's about caution for children or something, put one of those uh, on the three entrances off of Urbane. If we could get that approved, uh, it would be great. Wouldn't affect me directly, but it might save the life or injury child. I don't know. I, I'm not a member of the committee, so I can't make a motion. That's the dilemma that we have.
It dropped. What is it now?
There's no, I mean, countywide, you have twenty-five mile an hour.
Twenty-five in the subdivision.
But there's no signage at all.
Oh, there's not?
But it's not in the subdivision. He's talking about Urbane Road.
No, I'm talking about, they're leaving Urbane going into the subdivision.
Into the subdivision.
Into the subdivision.
Fifteen in the subdivision?
Right.
Do you all currently put speed limit signs in subdivisions?
Well, they're, yeah, they're supposed to be put in there. Yeah.
But he, he hasn't done it. You've got multiple people that have built, bought lots. I don't know. The county has done it in another subdivision, but I've, I've seen the signs. Probably prior to the current administration. We can, we can. It's not gonna be a, affect me, but it will affect kids, a lot of children.
We can get some signs up, uh, whether we put them up or we talk to the developer to put them up.
If you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
There's three entrances off Urbane into the subdivision. But one I don't know. I guess we need them. Do we need them? Vote on it?
It'd be good if you did, just, just for a record.
If we're gonna lower it, if we'll lower it, I'm sure we do, don't we?
I can't make a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend lowering the speed limit from twenty-five to fifteen miles per hour and adding signage in Bellingha- on Bellingham Drive and Bell Chase Way.
Second it? Any discussion?
Bellingham is, makes a big circle. It, it goes in, makes a huge circle, comes back out. Really, three sides.
Well, you have a discussion on it, don't you?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't know we were lowering it from twenty-five to fifteen. I, I just wanna say that, uh, we need to be careful with that, uh, 'cause these other subdivisions sees that you've lowered it from twenty-five to fifteen. They're gonna want it to.
This is the only subdivision with over two hundred townhomes, no single family. And I understand what you're talking about. Much more dangerous, period.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Say aye? Pose? Eyes have it? Don't see anything, any other business, Mr. Thompson?
Let's go back to salt shed. We, it's getting winter time. You people that live in the city don't have to worry about it. We do in the county.
I live in the county.
Uh, well, I'm glad you do. I don't care what if it falls down on top of the salt. Well, let's find some money.
He's got money, at least twenty thousand dollars.
For salt. You gonna take away from us salt?
Well, we'll find some more money.
We'll find it. Let's, let's talk about it.
I, I think what we have, uh, twenty or forty thousand dollars in salt, uh, that's not gonna... My, my guess would be this salt shed's gonna cost two or three hundred thousand dollars. That's a guess. What we got now is one hundred by thirty-two. And that's pretty sufficient. It, it could stand to be a little bigger, but it, you know, it'll work if it has to that size. We can hold about eleven hundred ton. It'd be good if we could hold fifteen hundred, but we can get by with, with what it is now. My guess would be two or three hundred thousand dollars. Here's, here's the thing about salt, uh, like right now, we, we're, we're full. Actually, we, we had some that we could buy, but we didn't have anywhere to put it. When, when winter hits and you have a big snowstorm, let's just say that it, it came a snowstorm in mid-November, and you use half of your thousand tons, so you got five hundred left. You pretty well can count on you're gonna have to get by the rest of the winter with that five hundred, 'cause once winter hit, and these blizzards hits up north, you can forget getting any salt then. That's why it's really important that you go into winter with all you can get. When I was in here before, uh, I was connected a little bit better with, with state guys. And they've actually let me put salt in some of their storage facilities. I'm over at Bradley Maintenance Lot. Uh, so I'm up at the Calhoun, uh, facility they have up there. But I'm not connected with T-Dot like I once was, and I'm not sure they would let us. And I don't know that they even have the space available for us to store any, but, uh... But I'm noticing around all the other, uh, road departments, most all of them have those aluminum, uh, half oval shaped domes, or whatever you call them, but, uh, I think that's the only way to go, really, 'cause, uh, we added on to this salt shed that we have now. It was fifty feet in length, and when I was in here before, we added on fifty, more feet. Well, that fifty we added on is just as rotten as the rest of it, the concrete is, so we, we're gonna have to get away from concrete and salt.
What do they have, what do they have, uh, in their mothers? What they, they got, oh.
Uh, you can put, you can set it on, uh, asphalt. That's what we did. We had it on asphalt.
Asphalt.
Yeah.
Last longer.
Actually, it will with salt. Yeah. If your loader operator will keep his bucket out of asphalt, yeah, it'll last longer.
Any more business before we close the meeting?
Real quick, just a quick way on the, uh, striping, the five hundred thousand. Can you, you made just an idea of how much has been used and how much you have left? Thank you very much. So, you know, all that has to be spent by twenty-six. You got plenty of time, but that's, that came out of ARP, so twenty-six. All that has to be spent.
When'd you say it had to be spent by?
Is it December twenty-sixth? Yeah, December twenty-sixth. You got plenty of time, but just don't let it sneak up on you. All of it has to be spent.
Okay. I'll say, uh, a lot of roads, so the paint lasts about five years, and if it's gonna get, um, paved within three years, we're probably holding off on striping it, 'cause we don't wanna waste any money, but, um, just gonna mention that, that if you see a road that needs stripes, um, doesn't have stripes on it, probably needs to be paved, too. We're getting, so, we'll get it all spent by December twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we'll le- we'll leave it up to you. Just wanted to let you know that the, uh, US Treasury asked for that last audit. Gotta have zeros there that it was all spent and invoiced.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, never did get no answer. What we're gonna do?
Josh is gonna get an estimate, as best I know. Appreciate you, Josh.
Well, when you gonna do that? Next year?
Josh, when you gonna do that?
Well, I called him yesterday. Hopefully this week. Try to get something to you this week, tell you how much it's gonna be.
I'll try to get something to you next week.
You gonna try to get some money together, too?
Hmm, yeah.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Put that in a minute.
Just give us a blank check. We'll, we'll get it.
Well, good. You just have to work with that mayor.
One, one more thing. Shannon, you got an amendment coming to finance on Monday for thirty-nine thousand two hundred. This is the insurance recovery for your lawnmower, I, your tractor, or whatever. So thirty-nine two hundred is obviously not the total cost of it, so that, I guess that's what the, um, insurance adjuster gave you, whatever. Here's your documentation. What's the, uh, amount you're gonna have to take out of your budget to cover the full cost?
Are you talking about to replace it?
Yeah. So you got thirty-nine, you got thirty-nine thousand, and then obviously the cost is gonna be more than that, so whatever the cost is minus the thirty now, it's gonna have to come out of your budget. How much is that?
I'm still not understanding the question. Oh, it's, uh, I think it's a little over a hundred and fifty thousand.
One fifty?
Yeah.
Right, so you gotta pull basically a little over a hundred thousand out of your budget to replace that tractor.
And that tractor should be here within the next three to four weeks, that new one.
Get a mower?
Yeah. Yeah, a long arm mower. That's why it's so expensive. Well, yeah, here's the thing about it. The, to be honest, we, the tractor and the mower both were about wore out anyway. They were...
I know that.
It was next to be replaced.
It was next.
But you're saying the mower.
But we didn't burn it now, don't get me wrong.
You're saying the mower and the long arm both, all it together.
Yeah. Actually, the, the, uh, mower is more than the tractor.
Eight horsepower.
Hundred and ten.
Anyone else?
Oh, wait, sand, tractor.
To us, I think they're around seventy. Of course, you know, we're buying it through the government, no tax, no, no nothing. We're buying it through Sourcewell.
I know that price.
Right. Well, with, with the long arm, we use a hundred and ten horsepower. Now with your, your regular side mower, we use a ninety horse on it, so, yeah.
Any communication from the audience? Seeing none? All right. Meetings adjourned. Thank you for coming.